To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bobby, would you call roll call please?
Jessica Mead.
Here.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deep.
Here.
Patrick McKenna.
Present.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Danielle Yushka.
Here.
J.D. Schrader. Jeanne Long.
Here.
Mike Bolley.
All right. Item A, under the consent agenda, is the approval of our minutes and financial reports. I'll ask for a motion, please.
Sir. I move the board to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2017 Board of Education meeting, June 13, 2017 Special Board of Education meeting. The financial report from May 2017 checks number 7664-7798 in the amount of $484,589.95, ACH is number 161701431-161701594 in the amount of $1,669,855.31 and a wire transfer of $8,420.86 for a total of $2,162,866.12.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by McKenna, second by Long. Are there any questions about the attachments or motion? Or any discussion? All right, there's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deep.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
And Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Next up we have public comment. Can you see if there's anything to... Okay, no public comments. All right. No student reps at this time, so we will move on to our new business. The first item is the Weekend Backpack Program update.
Wendy Simone is going to give us an update on the Weekend Backpack Program and Heather McCann. They do have a presentation, so if you don't mind going up and taking your seat.
It's not mine, I promise. This is just a copy of the surveys of the family and staff surveys, so if you guys want to see what people say about it, take a copy of that. Otherwise, I can come back. Chime in whenever you want.
Amazing.
So just to give you background of the Weekend Backpack Program or the web program, it started this year, upcoming school year, we are third year of the program. Heather and I are both on a committee, it's not a board, it's just like a committee of people, but it came out of a community needs assessment that the hospital does every three years, and a large area of concern that they found was health and nutrition and what kind of resources are available, so this was what we came up with. So in 2015, it started with one school, North, in the spring, and it expanded to West, and then now we have all nine elementary schools, including All Saints. Peace does not need it this time, but we did the middle school and high school also. Each week we pack about 375 on average, I think our highest was 394, it's about 200 families. We had a little sub-meeting today, and they said there's 1,100 kids in the district that are on free and reduced. 375 students approximately take advantage of it. West being our highest school, there's 94 students there, 75 at North, 62 at the middle school, 38 at the high school, which also includes partners program, we reach out to those students too. Crestwood S32 is Spring Valley 29, East 21 Pleasant View 14, and All Saints 13. So we have a 55% free and reduced rate here when the state average is 43%, so we're significantly higher than the state. Our team, we have reps from Covantage, the school district, UW Extension, the food pantry, social workers, teachers, we have secretaries on it, and we meet every month on a Tuesday and hash out where we're going. About 400 volunteers during the year. We have volunteers from custodians to committee members to parent volunteers that come hang the backpacks up. We're lucky to have custodians Ed and Jamie deliver the backpacks each week to a majority of the schools, and then Jamie Nelson also helps out with his family with the packing every week. Secretaries coordinate in each of the buildings, and we have about 14 people that show up to help pack backpacks each week. And we have a team that coordinates it, and they're almost every week when they're involved in it all, so. We've had a wide variety of people that, from service organizations, school different district staff members, high school sports teams, Key Club, Covantage consistently signs up, the hospital has groups that sign up, we get a wide variety of people from the community that come help out each week also. About 900 pounds of food per week, four to six volunteers unloading once per week at the pantry. We have switched that up a little bit, where we used to go to Walmart, we had to pick it up with the vehicles, and you can see us backing up to Walmart, we load it up, bring it over, and now we have worked with Lakeside, and they store the food for us, and they deliver it, which has been huge, and they give us a deal and the price is comparative, so we're using local sources to help us meet, so we're supporting local businesses and it's helping them out too. It cost about $60,000 for the last school year, it's about $160 for each child for the year for a backpack. We're always looking for improvements. One of our things, like I mentioned, we moved to Lakeside for storage and delivery, how we order food each week, we go by the MyPlate, the food pantry uses, so that things we're sending home, our nutrition is balanced, and then we changed from the canvas backpacks to cinch bags, which Wong gave us some money so that we could buy those backpacks, so they seem to be holding up well, but we just started that out in, I think it was May that we did that. So we're always searching for new ways that make it better. This is just a list of our donations, you can see on there a lot of businesses and private donors that contribute. Covantage also did a matching fund, Optimus gave us a significant amount, and you can go to the next one, and then we just did a presentation to the Religious Hospitalliers of St. Joseph's Mission Fund, and they gave us an additional $27,900 for next year, so this presentation may just modify from when we get there. So we're set for going into next year, but we're always looking at how we can get more kids, more families that we don't have these. And our goal at some point is we want to expand to other districts in Lake County, so we can get to White Lake and Elko, and so that we're addressing the needs of all of Lake County, not just Elko. Did that cover yours? Anything you want? Go ahead and chime in if you want to, otherwise you know I'll talk all day. Everybody knows that.
I think it pretty much sums it up, it's just really good for, we had a lot of good feedback, it's really helping, when you take a look at the whole like positive behavior intervention support, a lot of it really starts at, you know, the Antigone pride theme really starts with the food and just providing some of the needs that we just take for granted, many of us, and I even had somebody say, "How come we don't do it during summer school?" And I'm like, "Just let us get through summer school." That's a good idea, because some kids were, you know, some families are picking up their kids each week, and so maybe that is something we could look at too in the future. But people look at this web and they get it and they understand it, so obviously it's reproductive, and the information that you guys have in front of you, they take it very seriously to take a look at and get feedback from the families and the teachers. Sometimes the kids want to say we want different kinds of foods, but we have to keep it pretty simple, and some really good feedback from teachers, which helps us understand that we do have work to lay some more foundation as to why do we do some of these things that we do, because I do feel that teachers and people that work in the school system feel like there's so much that we do, can we just teach? But we really can't just teach, because you need to provide all these things, so. That pretty much is the whole focus and mission of working with this team and working with this virus team is great, Sarah Olafson, Megan Matic, things like this wouldn't be taking place without community support.
And so we can reach more families, we are going to be at all the open houses for all the schools, so that parents understand more we do not have a financial requirement for them to do it, if they feel they need it, they can sign up for it, and families are being responsible, when they don't need it anymore, they're saying, "Hey, you know what, it really helped us through a tough time, we're good, we'll let you know if we need it again." So we just want to really reach those people that we aren't hitting, so that's our goal.
That's cool that they admit that they don't need it, you know, and not take advantage of it. Just out of curiosity, what kind of meals are sent home?
We usually, it's like two proteins, two vegetables, a fruit, a breakfast, two breakfasts. So a typical backpack might include, like, we might have like a can of tuna, some beans, carrots, a couple granola bars, oatmeal, some snack food, like maybe a bag of popcorn. One thing we have talked about too is, from the surveys, some families like, "We want fresh food, can we have some fresh food?" So we've looked into a voucher system, so we're looking at working with Lakeside or Butches, because they already have some voucher system set up with the food pantry, so we might give a certificate for a carton of eggs, or, and we've also talked about like putting maybe some potatoes, because we have, obviously that's a resource we have, so we could put some potatoes in the bag that they don't do, or oranges, things that aren't going to get smushed.
There's also recipes that go home.
Yep, forgot about that. We send home a newsletter about community resources that they can access, and then we send home recipes with some of the items that we put in the backpack, so that they can have family meals and work together and cook together, and we had good comments about, "Oh, they like the recipes," and the feedback from that. But, you know, parents have said, you know, that they appreciate the help, they're very pleased with the program, and teachers have said, you know, that the kids are not seeming to be as hungry, they're coming to school, and when you aren't looking, when you have a secure food source, you can learn better, so. Anyways, keep it in shorts, so.
I mean, I just think others, I mean, yet another way, like, you know, I mean, I know a number of community members that volunteer, but just how like the teachers in our community too like step up to kids, and like, this is extra volunteer time that everyone takes to do this, you know?
There's Princess Charles in the back. Princess Charles.
I'll just leave them, and whoever's working with their children, but. I'm going to go, is that going to work for some of you tomorrow?
All right. Item B is the Committee on Instruction. Jeanne?
Jeanne. Meeting of the Committee on Instruction was called to order at 7:00 PM by Jeanne Long on Tuesday, June 6, 2017. Committee members present was Jeanne Long, J.D. Schrader, and Noel Deep, Danielle Yushka is absent, other board members present were Andy Mary, Mike Baldick, Danny Pyatt, and Patrick McKenna. Administrator present was Brian Missfeld, Cindy Fisher, Tom Vanzel, Amy Dunn, Jeff Newkell, Kelly Flossbender, and Toa Poyke. New business. Abby Sutermeier and Lauren Meto and Mike shared a presentation on the foreign language proficiency. They shared that they have worked, have working to create an assessment in Spanish and German that assesses reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The assessments, speaking in Spanish, for example, has reached a novice high of proficiency of 76% of students at the year ending 2016-17. A pilot upgrading changes was also explained to the committee, which includes changes towards best practice learned from professional development offered through the district in CISA 9. Changes include allowing reteaching, then retaking affirmative assessment, changing the weight on an F grade to a reasonable percentage, experimenting with a standard-based grading, eliminating extra credit for non-standard-based work and separating behavior from ability and grading. The monitoring report was presented by each principal, they reviewed where their goals were set in the fall and the progress obtained throughout the school year, discussion followed regarding various testing for students and how those tests measured student achievement. Cindy Fisher shared a brief summary on the AGR program for the school year. Principals also shared their AGR reports for each building, Spring Valley and Pleasant View do not participate in this program. The after-school program was not reported on, and policy 345.6 graduation requirement was discussed. This policy will be on the agenda for the final approval at the full board meeting on June 27, 2017. The set date for the August meeting is August 1, 2017, and the meeting was adjourned by 9:30 PM.
I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move the board to approve Committee on Instruction meeting minutes dated June 6, 2017. Second.
Should I, Danny Pyatt, second by McKenna? Any discussion on the minutes? Okay. All right, then, Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Noel Deep.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
And Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Next up, we have the Committee on Operations. And, Dr. Beatty, Andy?
Yeah. The meeting on Committee on Operations was called to order at 7:02 by myself, myself, Jessica Mead, and Danny Pyatt were present, Patrick McKenna was absent, other board members, J.D. Schrader, Danielle Yushka. Administrator is Brian Missfeld, Tina Verhagen. There was no public comment. Amendments to the 2016-17 budget, Brian Missfeld reviewed the status of the 2016-17 budget, noting the areas in which allocations have not been spent. Mr. Missfeld noted that had approximately 1 to 1.5% of our 2016-17 budget remaining, which would be used for end-of-year maintenance projects. The committee also discussed the usage of fund balance dollars for the West Elementary project. It was noted that money allocated for the project will not all be needed due to the remaining funds in the budget discussion followed as to whether some of these funds allocated from the fund balance should be contributed to Fund 46. The committee had initial discussions of allocating $250,000, which could be used from fund balance to complete the project at West, or be contributed to Fund 46. The remaining funds of the $500,000 initially allocated from the fund balance would not be used. This item will be moved to the board meeting tonight. Preliminary budget 2017-18, Brian Missfeld shared information related to the governor's budget proposal and the assembly budget proposal, and how they affected the 2017-18 budget for our district. Discussion followed as to whether or not the board wished to allocate funds from the fund balance for maintenance projects for 17-18 fiscal year. The committee indicated they would like to consider allocating $600,000 from fund balance for maintenance projects in the 17-18 school year. Tim Prunty will bring forward a preliminary budget for review and approval at the June 26 meeting. Staffing updates, Tina Verhagen shared an update to current staffing. She shared, she shared the hires made to date and the positions which remain in that field. The next meeting date will be August 15, 2017, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:50.
Thank you. Any motion to approve those minutes, please?
I will approve them.
I'll second it. Motion by Lisa, second by Long. Any further discussion on those, or questions? All right, Bobby, roll call, please.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deep.
Yes.
All right. Item 5D is the Ad-Hoc Meeting on Facilities Referendum meeting, that is held June 13.
Yeah. So the Ad-Hoc Committee on Facilities meeting itself, June 13. It's called to order at 7:20 PM. Committee members present, Jeanne Long, J.D. Schrader, Andy Mary, Danny McCann, Jessica Mead, Danielle Yushka, and Mike Bolley, Patrick McKenna, and Noel Deep are absent. Administrators on the committee present were Brian Missfeld, Tim Prunty, Cindy Fisher, Jake Leiterman, Amy Seabird Prowl. Other administrators present, Anita Matic, Amy Dunn, Tom Vanzel, Heather McCann. There was no public comment. Purpose and priorities for the committee, we set up, Brian and Missfeld and Andy Mary explained that the ad hoc meetings will now have a time limit to the agenda items, and the purpose for this was to help the committee members and participants stay focused on the agenda items. The committee is allowed to extend the time allowance if needed. Brian Missfeld also reminded the committee of the four priorities that were set forth for the previous ad hoc committee. Those priorities were to develop a consolidation plan that would be accomplished without a referendum and provided for equitable class size district-wide, equitable services district-wide, multi-track schools. On March 28, the USDA Board of Education adopted the following motion. The motion was amended, was read by Mike Bolley as follows. "I move the board to approve the implementation of the long-range facilities plan, moving eighth grade to the high school, fourth and fifth grade into the current middle school building, consolidating 4K through third grade into east, north, and west elementary schools, and closing the remaining elementary schools, beginning no sooner than the 2018-19 school year, and to be completed no later than the 1920 school year, unless a referendum is passed by the February 2018 spring primary election to implement an alternate facilities consolidation plan." The following voted yes, by roll call vote on the amended motion. We all voted yes. J.D. Schrader shared that he would be interested in more input from staff and to our administration in regards to consolidation. Amy Dunn said that she feels most of the staff is supportive of the consolidation plan, and that they are ready to make the necessary changes. Amy Seabird Prowl reminded the committee that, and board, that under the current budget restraints, the rural schools are not able to provide equitable services to special education or regular education. The resources and materials are just not available, the same in all buildings. Andy Mary and Brian Missfeld reiterated the purpose of the committee is to formulate possible alternative plan, which would take into consideration the following: desire for a rural presence, desire for equitable class sizes throughout the district, desire for equitable service throughout the district, desire for multi-track schools. Potential referendum for alternative consolidation plan, potential timeline for alternative consolidation plan. The committee reviewed the referendum timelines for regular, for a regular election November 7. Actually, this is...
Special election.
Yeah, November 7 would be a special election for the spring primary on February 20. The November 7, 2017 election would be a special election, as there is no regular election in November this year, and the February 20 one will be the schedules for primary election date. It is noted that the timeline is tight for either election date, and the consensus of the board is that we need additional time to develop what we want included in the referendum. Discussion followed regarding listening sessions, transportation issues, in-district transfers, boundaries, surveys, and alternative plans. Ideas for alternative plans included K-7 school, Plan D, two rural, two city, school of choice, leaving one rural building open, moving 6th, 7th, and 8th to the high school city elementary to be the middle school building, and leaving two rural open. All plans would involve major renovations and new construction. The committee, slash, board asked that the following be brought to the next meeting for further discussion. CC-10 report, 2015 survey results, and the estimated cost on repairs from Myron estimates. Due to time constraints, the committee elected to table agenda items, B, need for future operating referendum to support current plan, and E, potential timeline for operating referendum for discussion at a future meeting. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, July 11. I think it's 7:00 PM, and it must be adjourned. See that on my...
The meeting is on, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, looking for a motion to approve those minutes?
I move the board to approve the minutes from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Facilities Referendum meeting, 13, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Yushka, second by Pyatt. And questions or discussion on those minutes?
Thanks for meeting, you guys. I had a question, what is the mechanism for extending time for, for discussion, just out of curiosity?
When we get near the time limit, we decide if, we just, you know, Brian just asked, "Do you think you want to keep discussing this?" And we do.
That limiting, no, that sounds good.
Yeah, I think it helps you get focused.
A majority vote, or, you know, in this case, there was, when I said, "Do we want to keep discussing?", everyone kept discussing, so I took that as...
But consensus. Yeah.
And then I was curious, so you talked about timelines, does, so it said that the timeline is tight for either election date, and that more, they need additional time to develop what we want included, does that mean like pushing off the timeframe of that, or just meaning that like we have a lot of work to get done, and we need to get it done before?
We have a lot of work, and we did not push off either one of them, although we came forward over in November 1.
Yeah, 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 no, that makes sense.
Similar discussion, Patrick, which has been noted in here, was that summer's a very hard time to get input from our parents. So we talked about that a little bit, which makes the November deadline really tough, but February is still possibly doable, knowing that we could get some things done in September and October.
Yeah, there was a little discussion about, yeah, meeting more often to get this done, but really get a lot of stuff here for administration to put together, so.
Anyone else? Okay. Bobby, roll call, please.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yep.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deep.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
And Jessica Mead.
Yes.
As well. Next up, board action. Item A. Item A, notification of format of dates for thirty policies. Twenty-two, three, four administrative vacation and holidays, three forty-two, point five, one. Title one, parental involvement, three forty-three, point one, grouping for destruction.
This is just notifying you, as you remember, as we're going through policies, if we find those, that just needs some minor mechanical or mechanical changes. We just changed them to the new format, and the policy just says that I'll notify you of those. So, for example, in two twenty-three, point four, I just changed the titles of our administrative staff because they had, it sort of hadn't been updated for quite some time, and we just had the wrong titles for... Director of Curriculum Instruction was the Assistant Superintendent. Director of Special Education had some title that was very outdated, so we just updated those. The other policies are just some mechanical updates of them, by them, the proper format of our new policies. No actions required on that, because the content of the policies wasn't changed.
All right, anyone have any questions about any of those? All right, and we will move to item six C, which is the second reading of three forty-one, point two, education for employment, three forty-five, point six, graduation requirements, seven-six-three, and seven-six-three R, school meal account charges and collections with that period. Looking for a motion.
I move for approve the following policies as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by McKenna. Any discussion on those? It's our second reading, so we've been over these, and I think we talked last time about just some minor tweaks, but they all look good. Great, there's no further discussion. Bobby, would you take roll call, please?
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyett?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Item six C is the monetary reports.
I move for approve the academic monetary reports as presented at the committee on instruction meeting, June sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion by Mary, second by Pyett. Any discussion on this? I think most everyone was there, so... Okay, if there is no discussion on that, we will move to roll call.
Do a voice vote on that one.
Oh, okay, all right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, seven D, the A G R year-end reports.
I move for approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen A G R reports as presented at the committee on instruction meeting on June sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by McKenna. Any questions on that? I haven't even attached to that, so... Just part of the, okay, yep, part of our minutes from committee on instruction. Is that a voice vote as well? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item six E, the W I A A membership renewal.
I move for approve the age of senior high membership renewal for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by McKenna.
Annually, we just need to renew our membership in W I A A. Right now, it's at no cost. The past few years, the W I A is way of the cost, the membership fee, so no cost to us, but it is something we have to agree to participate in in order to participate in W I A sports.
Why do they wait?
Tim, any idea? Tom? Why is the fee been, yeah, done away with?
I think they just have enough funds, so not...
I think basically, they make enough funds off of state tournaments and...
Like everywhere else in education, just so many...
I noticed that they, that they increased their ticket fees, so...
Cool. Do they get a cut of our ticket fees?
Yes.
As Heather noted, there are costs associated with it. For example, they just voted that shot clocks would be required for basketball, varsity basketball by the nineteen twenty school year, so that's an expense that you can expect coming up. That certainly the W I A won't be paying for, will be paid for. And I think if you're a company that installs shot clocks, you're probably bumping your prices up right now, so...
The other thing that we talked about when they announced it is game workers. That means you're going to have to have an additional game worker at every game as well to run the shotgun.
It's to create more jobs.
Fund advancement.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Then we will do a voice vote on this one as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
What would be, that will be forty-eight seconds, students?
Thirty-five.
Cool.
All right, item six F, four K agreements.
I move the board to approve the four K partner agreements as presented. Second.
Motion by Long, second by Pyett. Any questions on any of these?
Same partner agreements we've had for the last few years. Head start. Head start, All Saints and La Royer. Let's do roll call on this, because we want to get somebody involved.
All right, if no further agreement, we'll take roll call.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Upstate.
Danny Pyett?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes. Motion carries. Item six G is oversight, and we do not need to address that.
I put that item on there. Bobby and I had discussed it, it was on there the previous year. However, Cindy reminded us that the Family Corner Resource Center is no longer located in the middle school, so we don't need to approve the agreement with them any longer, so... It was on there, and rather than take it off, I figured we just addressed it, and then we can... That's a quick way to get through there.
All right, so we'll move to the next item, which is the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget amendments.
I move the board to approve the amended fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget as presented, showing expenditures of twenty-six million, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars for the general fund. But wait, and then parentheses, twenty-seven million, forty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four... I'm sorry.
Do you want me to explain it first?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's better.
So I was, I apologize for missing last Tuesday's meeting, and it was a little unclear to me, I mean, Brian had told me that you were interested in doing some transfer of funds into Fund Forty-Six. And Fund Forty-Six is our capital projects budget, and the fund is set up such that the state allows us to get aids on the money, just like a regular expenditure, when we take money from the general fund and put it into Fund Forty-Six. This capital projects fund cannot be used for five years commencing of last year's initial deposit, which would have occurred in June of last year. So the money is held in the trust. It's independent of any other, it's an isolated account, and the only thing that happens there is we get earnings on investments. We can't touch the money for five years. Any deposits we made this year now, we have, we can't touch for four years and so on. And once we reach the five-year window, the funds then become fluid where we can, we can plan a project, deposit in one year at the end of the year, and use that of money immediately the next year. It's just the establishment of the trust. Brian had told me you were interested in doing something about two hundred and fifty thousand worth. To me, my recommendation, when we, when we start getting aids on money, we get aids for expenditures from this year's budget in next year. By declining enrollment, our general revenues are declining, and the impact of the aids further decreases our mill rate, so it kind of... It doesn't add an accelerated rate, and it's artificial. So I think it would be very prudent, over the course of a five-year period, at the end of that five years, when we want to take on a capital projects fund, that we have between five to six hundred thousand dollars, so that we can take a big project and get it completed. There's no reason that we should necessarily do that now, because we want to, I'm recommending that we do another maintenance project for next year. Brian talked about it, the operations meeting, that we underspent the budget. Andy goes, very typical, you know, we hold our principles to the fire saying, this is your budget, don't spend, and yet, over the whole budget area, everybody's kind of being cautious, and we underspend just a little bit. Well, the budget is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand individual account codes, and if everybody underspends a little bit, it's hard in the last month to pull that together and get those funds extended. So rather than be, I'm estimating today that we're probably near a hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent, that we will be, where you guys authorized, the board authorized five hundred thousand, will be a hundred and fifty thousand of that five hundred. It could go as high as two hundred thousand. My recommendation, and the numbers in the parentheses, are if we should allocate a hundred thousand dollars towards Fund Forty-Six, the capital projects fund. And that's, so the motion is written with two options, okay? So if you want to spend a hundred thousand on Fund Forty-Six, with the parentheses. If not, and you want us to hold tight to just the hundred and fifty that we're estimating we'll spend at West to do the numbers outside of the parentheses.
Yeah. And it, I mean, in the conversation, too, it sounded like there was general feeling toward the hundred thousand added. Is that, is that right?
Yeah. So when we were discussing that in operations, that we were discussing, there's two hundred and fifty thousand, we would use some of it for that building project, and the balance would go into Fund Forty-Six, but now you're saying that the whole two hundred and fifty thousand would still be there.
Okay, no, what Tim's saying is we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand of the money allocated from fund balance. So if we allocate a hundred to Fund Forty-Six, that'll hit us at about that two hundred and fifty mark. What, two hundred and fifty thousand out of fund balance? Yes. So we know, we know the project at West, we know that budget, that's a bid number. We are going to spend all that money. The balance of the budget is underspent. So the bottom line, as far as what we report to the state, they, we have, certainly we have functions, so we can account for it. But when you look at our overall fund balance, it takes the capital projects that we are going for West and the rest of the unextended funds, and the two get mingled in fund balance, and they get masked. So we, you told, the board authorized us to expend five hundred thousand for the projects at West on the fund balance. We will do that. But because the rest of the budget is underspent, fund balance won't show the total of five hundred thousand being spent, because the unextended funds will be added back into the fund balance for use in future years.
And, and if we transfer that to the capital funds project, that is aidable, I mean, that qualifies as aidable funds right now?
For next year, correct. So, Tim, if they were to allocate one hundred thousand for Fund Forty-Six, it would be the equivalent of spending about two hundred and fifty out of fund balance? Correct, to date, as I know, as I know the budget.
But if we wanted to, we could take three hundred and fifty thousand and put it in that Fund Forty-Six.
And, and Andy, the only advantage of doing it right now is it's aidable. So you, it's going to be an aidable expense for next year, but now you've locked the money up for up to four years. And I'm saying, if your intention is to go ahead and spend fund balance for next year on a project, why not just take the unextended funds rather than locking them up and claim aids on them next year? So we would miss one year of the, on those funds.
What do you recommend?
I think it would be prudent to do a hundred thousand.
Okay, oh, I see, and then keep the other part for funds?
For a few, for, for projects next year.
Now, I see. All right, I move the board to approve the amended fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget as presented, showing expenditures of twenty-seven million, forty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars for the general fund, which also includes a transfer of a hundred thousand to the capital projects fund, and expenditures for all funds, including debt service, of thirty-one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred eleven dollars.
Motion by McKenna, second by Mary.
Does the board, does, does the board have any additional questions, because I'd be prepared to... Essentially, statutorily, we're required to amend the budget, and we like to do that amendment prior to the audit. And we have a preliminary, preliminary audit starting Wednesday and Thursday of this week, and the full audit will occur in July. There were several documents that I added, and if the board wants to, I can go over the budget in a little more detail. But essentially, it's truing up the budget from the original adoption back in October to as close as we are actuals of last week. Questions?
We got slightly more for Sage, is that right?
Yeah, so what we do, and the problem we have is we're taking information with Sage, and we're looking at our Sage budgets right now. Sage is one of those areas where they allow for carryover. So we look at, we know that we have salaries coming out of Sage A G R, and we don't, particularly in a biennial budget, we don't know what's going to happen. So we like to reserve, since we have actual teaching staff coming out of that grant, we like to hold some money back. And that will be areas of the fund balance that we talked about that are going to show restricted, because that's money that has to be used for Sage A G R. So we hold some of that back, and you can see that it's based on a free and reduced lunch count, and those Sage numbers by building aren't determined until the end of October, the first of November. So we're being very conservative at this time, and typically, even when we adopt the budget in October, we're just getting those numbers that...
Andy, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out, too, you setting your...
Patrick, if you'd like to, why don't we just quickly pull open one report that kind of will walk you through it?
The letter, yeah.
I, I think the, the report that is actually better is Don Schmager produces a detailed budget summary, so it's called Budget Summary Detailed. And if you open that document, you can see what's going on with Sage A G R. And you can see that we essentially had revenues and corresponding expenses, a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven, a hundred and eight dollars more than what we anticipated when the budget was approved. And in my memo to you, I under the grants, I wrote that back, I think before we went to sale, we had that training. And we had, I had failed to include a Fab Lab grant in the other grants that's highlighted in blue there. So the, in the memo, I talked about, the Fab Lab grant was twenty-five thousand dollars, and so my, my memo is twenty-five thousand dollars light in the revenues associated... And so my memo is $25,000 right in the revenues associated with grants. And then that detailed worksheet goes through by each fund. And so if you, if you look at Fund 27, we actually got flow-through dollars, $2,888 less in flow-through than we anticipated. In Fund 21, which is also summarized in the budget report, we actually expended $66,663 additional on various grants. And those grants included a $25,000 classroom grant. And if you scroll down through the document, that will detail exactly in that second section there where it says Fund 21 down towards the bottom, it will give you the detail of all the changes. So then if we scroll back up to that, just under the total general fund, you can see debt service is identical. That's the prior service debt that we had refinanced to pay WRS. That's an amortization schedule. We know exactly what that's going to be because it's a payment we must make. So there's no change. Under Fund 50, we were $33,481 difference than the approved budget. And we had a duplication of summer school feeding program for this year. So we were $10,000 overstating our expense. But we also received a equipment grant in a total of $43,481 that Sarah Vorgold, and it's replacing a freezer at the West and a dish machine at the middle school. So we were really fortunate to get that. So I guess, all told and all funds, we were $216,570 difference from the adopted budget back in October.
Any other questions for Tim?
Can you say it all again?
We got one more to go. Don't make me do it.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. If there's no other discussion, Bobby, roll call vote.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6I is also 2017-2018 preliminary budget approval.
Tim?
Okay, so the numbers in the parentheses in the motion include the $600,000 expenditure of fund balance for use of maintenance projects. We're not specifying what those are. And I guess, at this point in time, if the board is uncomfortable, I'm looking primarily for a direction to develop the budget for the August budget hearing. And we can delay the decision to use fund balance until we amend the budget in October and September. But if the board has a desire to direct the business office to prepare the budget documents and to prepare the budget book, we could include that use of fund balance for capital projects. So that's what I lay out. And rather than break up the discussion, I think at this point, if you've listened to, read any of your news articles, essentially, it's a very preliminary budget. And the document that you can look at by comparison is if we pull that open, we should have, Bobby should have loaded, let's see. Let's look at the preliminary budget, and I think it's going to be the Excel document, the first one. And if you open that up, you can essentially see, we've got almost no information in there for you. Because it is totally an estimate. And the biggest driving factor is going to be third Friday enrollment. And we don't learn that until September 15. And why that's so critical for us? Within the revenue limit formula, there's a declining enrollment exemption. And if we lose more students than we've estimated, we actually, it's counterintuitive. We get a bigger exemption and we have a bigger revenue limit, a one-time revenue limit. If our enrollments are greater than we're projected, our revenue limit exemption is less, and we'll have less money than what we built the original budget around. So it's pretty difficult. We won't know that number until the third Friday in September. The impact on the tax levy, we aren't going to know until October 1st. So, and the use of fund balance, I was a little worried about, you know, I told you we're going to get more aids on it. That's going to push down our local percentage of the levy. But the revenue limit is really the overriding factor. It plays such a big role in the formula that if we keep our expenditures of fund balance reasonable, and I think it'd be prudent to try to anticipate the future rather than make a one-year spike, that we're going to be better off for taxpayers because the tax levy will be more constant. But we know the trend of declining enrollment means our local taxes are going to continue to go down as long as enrollment goes down. So the preliminary budget as presented is balanced. But you can see it's less than what it was last year with the overall impact on the levy estimated around a decline of 7%. And like I said, the numbers in parentheses include a $600,000 expenditure of fund balance for capital projects. Should you choose to do that?
Keep in mind that being on just third Friday count, depending on which budget proposal goes through, or if either of them goes through, that'll have a pretty significant impact on our district as well.
No definite timeline. It's kind of up to them.
I think what's going to happen, like even with what I've been reading on the joint financing, will be with the addition version where they're adjusting the low-cost ceiling. With the exemption, it depends on how they word it. When we get the revenue limit exemption, we're going to be at about $9,400. So it's, we're probably going to be just too high to qualify for the exemption as it's currently written. With it moving up to about $9,800 over the next three years. So it'll help us in the future, but I don't, as it's currently written right now, I don't think that'll have a big impact.
We need a motion?
I move the board approve the fiscal year 2017-18 preliminary budget as presented, showing anticipated expenditures of .6710,688 for the general fund, including the use of up to $600,000 for maintenance projects. And total expenditures for all funds of $30,615,960. And authorize the administration to publish the budget in preparation for the August budget hearing. It is understood that this budget is subject to change upon a final legislative action and DPI verification of the district's allowable revenue limit.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by McKenna. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I ask for a clarification? Just looking at the motion, we identify, including the use of up to $600,000 for maintenance projects. I think I'd be more comfortable if you'd be willing to amend that motion, Andy, to say, including the use of up to $600,000 from fund balance for maintenance projects.
Oh, yes, I would be willing to amend it to that.
Second.
So we have amended by Mary, second by McKenna. Any discussion?
I think what it does is it clarifies, we have maintenance, we have a maintenance budget within the balanced budget, which can be used for remodeling. This would be in addition to that, we'd like as revised the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we are now voting on the amended amendment to amend the motion. Bobby, roll call vote please.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes. Motion carries. Right now, we are looking at the amended motion, which is including the use of up to $600,000 from fund balance for maintenance projects. Any other discussion on this motion?
All right, if there's no other questions or discussions, Bobby, roll call vote please.
Is there a motion on a second on the amended motion?
Who's did that?
Mary.
Same.
Oh, same, okay. McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes. Item 6J is our new hires.
Would like a motion, please?
I move the board approve the hiring of the following for the 2017-18 school year. Jaclyn Reamer, middle school counselor. Brianna Kratz, high school counselor. And Jordan Kratz, high school technical support.
Second. Motion by McKenna, second by Yushka.
Just as a clarification, Jordan Kratz should be high school tech and technology education.
All right, any other questions on any of the hires? All right, if there's no further discussion, Bobby, roll call vote please.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is resignations. I'll need a motion for that as well.
I move, I move the board accept the resignations as follows. Quinn Hurdlickup, school counselor and head varsity wrestling coach. And Ari Merpart, high school science teacher, effective June 30th, 2017.
Motion by McKenna, second by Mary. It's stereo there. All right. All right, any discussion on our resignations? All right, if there is no discussion, Bobby, roll call vote please.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And our last item under new business is donations. I move the board accept the donations as follow. $2,000 John Trader Memorial for Animal Baseball. $200 Walter Ferguson Memorial for the Aquatic Center. $100 for the Remand Credit Union, Boys' Sack. $500 for Amron for Odyssey and the Mine Physics Club. $700 for Land Rudder Ball and Track. $100 for Caster Roller, Junior Hall, Boys' Sack. $300 for Ladyman for Animal Baseball. $1,075.27 for the National Railroad Museum for Cossin to the Museum. $300 for Ladyman for Softball. $1,000 for Animal Advisance for Field and Magnet Program. All totaling $6,185.27.
Second.
Add a donation on that. Animal Special Olympics got a donation of $100 from TCI. All the parents weren't, and we gave her the donation.
Jeanne, be sure to check with the middle school office to make sure we did that record. In the thank yous and behalf of the board as well.
I was going to talk to you about that after the meeting. I'm going to talk to you about that.
Okay.
How are you? The National Railroad Museum is a nice donation. It's a huge expense. It's usually part of most of our field trips, is the transportation. So I thought that was very nice. It's a great museum.
Where is it?
It's Green Bay.
Green Bay.
All right, any other discussion on the donations? All right, if there's no other discussion, roll call vote please.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
And Jessica Mead?
Yes.
I don't explain this, do you?
Yeah, yep, definitely. That concludes our business for the evening of the 2017 meeting.
We have a new president.
Yes.
Second.
We are adjourned. Not the motion.
So we're adjourned.
Danny Pyatt, second. We are adjourned.